The Acushnet Planning Board. Tonight's meeting is being recorded for the future YouTube channel. I think we're on live on the local cable channel and we're also on via Zoom. Can I get someone to make a motion to open the planning board meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Have a favor?
Aye.
We have a full board tonight. Can we get everybody to introduce themselves?
Steve Boucher, member.
David Vingman, member.
Mark Francois, chairman.
Rich Ellis, vice chairman.
Brian DeChamp, member.
Okay, next minutes of June 15th. This was actually already, we already had seen these, we already approved these. This was a mistake Paul didn't realize that we had already approved these. So this is going to be stricken from the agenda. Correspondence, there is none. And next, can I get a motion to open the public hearing portion of this meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Have a favor?
Aye.
Public hearing. This is a site plan review and solar special permit modification continued. Plan entitled Lambert Street Access Road issued on June 6, 2023. To process a modification for a site plan review and a special permit for a 7.5 megawatt solar array, excuse me, proposed by Simcar for Park Drive LLC. The engineer is Weston and Sampson. The plans and accompanying documentation are available for inspection at the town clerk's office, parting ways building 130 main street, first floor during regular business hours.
Good afternoon, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jesse O'Donnell with Weston and Sampson, representing the project applicant tonight's in Carpa Capital. On behalf of a special permit modification request for a proposed access road to a previously approved solar development. I have Michael Atkinson representing Simcarpa Capital tonight on via Zoom. So to start and to recap, the public hearing for this inquiry tonight started in May this past summer and we received some good feedback from the board in May. And prior to ending that meeting that night, the board had requested that we go through the Conservation Commission process before returning and resuming the public hearing with the planning board. And just last week, we got a vote from the Conservation Commission with respect to our stormwater management permit and our notice of intent application. They voted to approve both of those applications. So here we are tonight, resuming the public hearing before the planning board. So to recap, I'd like to talk a quick minute about the previously approved solar development, just to reiterate some of the history there and then I'll go into the matter at hand tonight, which is just the access driveway proposed to that previously approved solar development. So the solar development itself is about 20 acres in size, just north of Park Drive in town. There's two portions to the solar development.
Excuse me. Let me interrupt you for one quick second. Brian, underneath is sets of plans. Can you pass out two of those, please?
And that's a good point, Mr. Chairman. The plans that are before you tonight are the revised plans reflective of the feedback that the planning board requested during the last meeting. We'll go into what those modifications were in a few moments. So the previously approved solar development, 20 acres just north of Park Drive in town. In 2021, we received approval from the planning board and from the Conservation Commission with respect to the solar development. Before the development was to proceed to construction, there were a number of legal concerns raised by Project Abutters with respect to the Brooks Ave access proposed development highlighted in yellow here. With respect to those legal disputes that were raised by the Project Abutters, the project team and the applicant sought for some alternative via options to access the site. And we identified Lambert Street, which is in pink, as a viable alternative to access the site, to extend the right of way, which is currently at the northerly end of Lambert Street, is a dead end right of way. We would be proposing to extend a gravel driveway 300 feet through that right of way north to the frontage of our private development, which contains the solar panels. And now I can flip the board, which shows the Lambert Street portion of this zoomed in and I can talk a bit more about these, the site plans. So the section that I had highlighted on the return side of the board was right here, Lambert Street. So Lambert Street currently exists as a dead paved end right here and we'd be looking to propose 300 linear feet or so of extension of Lambert Street up into the project frontage, which contains the private development and then the solar panels on that development. So with respective feedback that we've received from the board last meeting, the board had asked that some of the hatching and the shading in our plans be made a bit more legible. So we've done that. And then specifically, the board asked that we increase the length of our proposed stabilized construction entrance, the quote, quote track pad, from 50 feet to 100 feet at the entrance to the site. And that's to minimize sediment track out onto the neighboring residential streets. And so we've done that. So on the plans that you're seeing right now, the stabilized construction entrance is a full 100 feet in length. We also received some feedback from the DPW at the onset of this inquiry and they asked that we extend the paved dead end of Lambert Street. You'll see a little section about 20 or 30 feet in length right at the start. And that's just to provide the Abutter, who has, I think, a dirt driveway just extending right to the east there, just paved access into his or her driveway. So we've done that on behalf of the DPW's comment as well. With respect to other feedback we received, we did receive feedback from Natural Heritage, a state entity with respect to the species and the habitat on site, which I know is a concern. They reviewed the proposed project and issued a letter reviewing the project. They issued a no take to the eastern box turtle, which is mapped as being a rare habitat on site. They issued a no take to that habitat under the condition that a qualified wildlife scientist prepares a turtle protection plan that is reviewed by the Conservation Commission. And that's a portion of the approval we received with the Conservation Commission last week. Moving forward in terms of additional permits that we have yet to go from the state level, we have just started the MIPA process with the MIPA office and we just started the process with the Mast EP 401 water quality certification. And then beyond that, we have a federal process with the US Army Corps of Engineers for a pre-construction notification with respect to the wetland alteration proposed on site. So with that said, I'm happy to answer any questions.
We talked about, Mr. Chairman. We talked about developing a traffic plan, a route, so that we don't have trucks meandering everywhere, that there's a designated path because there are so many streets in this neighborhood. Do you recall or did somebody convey that to you?
Yeah, I recall that request. I think it's a very worthwhile and appropriate request, given the location of the site. And it was mentioned at the Conservation Commission hearing last week as something that we would discuss this week. And as we approach construction, the applicants amenable to forming a plan with the board as part of the pre-construction kind of preparations. Additionally, they're willing to kind of conform, to be somewhat flexible with the time at which the construction vehicles are entering and leaving the site to conform with school schedules. So that's all something that we would be happy to entertain, you know, as a condition or however the board wishes to proceed to make sure that those issues are heard and
Yeah, we would just need a route, a written route, and then signage put out on the corners letting, because you have different drivers, different companies, different, you know, different sized trucks. And we would want signage of, and arrows pointing to the site so they're not using GPS and getting lost all within, in the neighborhood.
But I'd like to see some sort of, you know, map that actually outlines the way in and the way out. I'd also like to see Dimonan's input on that. There may be roads that, you know, he says, well, we're going to reconstruct that road next year. So go down that road because let the trucks beat that up. That road we just paved, I don't want you touching it. I mean, there may be reasons he may, you know, he may direct you in a certain way. But I'd like to see a map route, something, you know, an exhibit outlining, not only that, but the, you know, like you said, the times to avoid the buses, the bus routes. I'd like that all to be given to us for review before we vote on this.
That is something we commonly can prepare, yeah, just the map, whether it's on a smaller plan or a full-size plan, just with, you know, a route that would be proposed for I'll make a note of that.
And how that would be, you know, implemented during construction. Like I said, I'd like to see the input from the highway superintendent, which is Dimonan.
This is Mike Atkinson from Simcarpa here on Zoom. We're happy to provide all of that and willing to work with the DPW and whoever is necessary to implement the best road plan. But we are still a ways away from construction, obviously, with a number of the other state permits that we need to obtain. We would ask that that be made a condition prior to obtaining a building permit because the time in between now and actual construction is going to, is going to change the exact details of that plan and things like you just mentioned, roads that are planned to be upgraded or roads that, you know, need repairs anyway. So if we could hold off on that until the issuance of a building permit, we would greatly
What is going to be, what is your estimated duration of construction?
Yeah, I think it's viable to get construction completed with less than a year. But just to be safe, the number that we were discussing with the Conservation Commission last week was up to about a year.
The overall, all right, let me define, the heavy traffic, when you said, when you started clearing, I mean, a lot of this had to do with the heavy trucks coming in and out. Construction, putting in your stanchions for your, for your solar panels is one thing, but it's just time consuming in itself. But the overall clearing process of the property, we're talking a month, we're talking six months? So that, you know, the residents got some sort of, you know, idea of that?
Yeah, that's a good question. With respect to the more heavy traffic with respect to clearing, Mike, do you have a general idea of how long that duration would be?
Likely three to six months, again, depending on the time of the year. That's the heavy traffic for the clearing and for equipment deliveries. That won't be all day, every day, but you know, there will be a three to six month period where there will be, you know, heavier truck traffic. And again, it all depends on the time of year that we actually begin construction. So we really ask that that plan be made a condition prior to the issuance of the building permit when we know our exact construction timeline.
When you were in front of Conservation and discussing stormwater, was the topic of tree clearing, when you could clear trees? In other words, no tree clearing during the winter months, everything done more in the summer months? Was that something that was discussed?
It was.
I don't, I don't recall the exact specifics of when we could and cannot clear trees, but that was discussed with, with Pat Han and the Conservation Commission. And we are amenable to those requirements.
I just bring that up because we had a project here in town that they started clearing during the winter, they couldn't get coverage to, you know, the grass coverage and seeded in time before the end of November. And we had a catastrophe here in town with water runoff. I know that your project is also kind of slanted down below your project, there's another project and below that project, there's a development that's going to be being started. So we definitely get to keep an eye on when the tree clearing starts, preferably in the spring, so you get it done throughout the summer and not done during the winter when most of the water runoff is going to be happening, if that's possible.
Yeah, of course, we're happy to work with, with any whatever guidelines are laid out to us by, by the town and by the state permitting process. We're going to learn a lot more as we go through the DEP process and the MIPA process. And, you know, that's again, one of the reasons why we prefer to not, you know, not, not be required to finalize anything here tonight prior to a vote and wait until we have more guidance from, from the state agencies.
Please, on the MIPA filing, you started the process that has a defined timeline to it. What is the date that they have to issue a certificate?
Yeah, so we're going through the expanded environmental notification form process first, followed by the single environmental impact report process. And we're, we're in the notification period for the expanded ENF at first phase right now. And we're looking, I think it's a 40 odd day period and we're looking to finish that in mid to late October. So the environmental monitor would have the publication either one of the two dates in November, I believe, probably that first date in November with respect to the ENF.
Okay. Possibly roundabout? I'm just trying to understand.
For the overall process?
Yes.
Yeah, so we're envisioning about a six-month process for MIPA and the process started a few weeks ago.
Okay. Fair enough.
Did, now, did you say you received your stormwater permits already?
Yeah, the Conservation Commission voted last week to approve the stormwater management permit and the notice of intent application.
Now, were there any conditions in that relative to stabilizing the site so we don't have a disaster in the spring again with uncontrolled runoff from the, from the site?
Yeah, in relation to the conditions, the Conservation Commission, I believe, has 21 days to finalize the conditions and issue the approval. We did agree upon a number of proposed special conditions in addition to all of the typical conditions that the Conservation Commission issues. I have a copy of that here tonight and I can see if there's anything with respect to that in the nine special conditions. Let me just take a quick look to see if there's anything with respect to that item here.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Pat, go ahead.
Could you just have them read you all of the special conditions that the commission put on this because they were significant?
Yeah, I'd like to hear them.
Yeah, I can do that. So there's nine conditions. I'll just start off. Number one is, says no work is to begin until all final approvals have been obtained and all appeal periods have been, have expired from the following agencies it required. NHESP, Army Corps, MIPA, Stormwater, Planning Commission, Building Department. Number two says the commission is to be copied on all submittals to any regulatory agency or board. Number three says the commission will be allowed to comment on any submittals and to require peer review of submittals to NHESP, that's Natural Heritage, Army Corps, and local stormwater. Number four says turtle protection plan is subject to commission approval and will include the proposed frequency of third-party inspections. Five, the project will provide the name of the contractor selected for the site civil work with a list of projects the contractor has completed in the last five years that required compliance with NHESP-approved turtle protection plans. Six, the project will provide an initial deposit of $5,000 with the town peer review and should peer review become necessary in relation to the NHESP process, Army Corps, and stormwater third-party review on behalf of the town. Seven, the project will report rainfall events based on the electronic rain gauge at the Acushnet EMA building and reported on the Weather Underground website. Eight, the land clearing and earth disturbance for the project will be accomplished in phases with a plan on how the project will accomplish construction period stabilization of each phase will be included with the stormwater pollution prevention plan, which will be provided to the commission for staff approval. And I apologize, there were eight conditions, I said nine. So that concludes the conditions and I think the eighth one that I just read off is the most relevant to your original question.
Anything else?
I certainly, in terms of the traffic management plan, there certainly has, from my perspective, there has to be a traffic management plan submitted to the planning commission with enough time for approval by the highway superintendent or the DPW superintendent and the, and the police chief prior to issuance of a building permit. And there has to be part of that, there has to be some substantial marking so that whoever is driving the trucks is not going to end up wandering around that area of town, GPS or no GPS.
Okay.
I mean, the changes, the changes that you've shown to this plan, that they're right in line with the last meeting that we had. But before a building permit is issued, certainly there has to be a traffic management plan that both the police chief and the Department of Public Works can comment on and be satisfied with.
Certainly, okay.
How much, how much time before a building permit, would you like to see a traffic management plan submitted to you?
If the police chief and the Department of Public Works are satisfied with it, I mean, I don't really expect to challenge their expertise in that matter. I'm more concerned that we have a route that is signed and legible for construction traffic to follow. I mean, there's a way, there's a way to get through there expeditiously and efficiently. And there are going to be a lot of different trucks with a lot of different drivers and they may not know that expeditious way to get there.
I would, I would like that as well. I've given out my, my personal self, I'm not, to enough folks that I'd like the trucks to follow the correct routes, I'm not getting, getting phone calls from, from the folks in the neighborhood when the trucks don't go down the right street.
Anything else?
I'm good, other than obviously respecting people's property, especially the truck drivers, watching how they make their corners and they're not running over people's grass coming, heads are coming. If somebody's road is a little bit narrow, you have big, long trucks, things like that.
Yeah, we can put some notes on, in addition to the traffic management plans, and put notes just to, you know, kind of voice those concerns as well.
If it does happen, things, things happen, that it gets addressed sooner, immediately, actually, you know, to make some sort of correction to that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Pat.
So I was in the trucking business for a number of years and there's going to be a lot of trucks for these two projects because deep work will be starting probably with all of their house lots at the same time as this. When I did a project like this, I put placards on the dashboard of the trucks that worked on my project so that I didn't get blamed for every truck that came through town. And I would suggest that there's a placard that's placed on the dashboard of the trucks. So when coming through town, if there's a yellow piece of paper that says, you know, Simcarpa or whatever it says, we can differentiate those trucks from other projects in town. The second part is in the traffic plan, there should be a financial penalty for the trucks that don't follow the truck route. And that was very effective for me, that if somebody got caught on the side street and it cost them a hundred bucks, that was the last time they used that street. If it happened a second time, they would be banned from the project. And that's how you get truckers to do what they're told to do. So I'd suggest a placard and a penalty for trucks that don't observe the truck route.
Good suggestion, very good.
Yeah, I hear you.
Okay, so are we continuing the public hearing? Oh, I'm sorry, yes, you're right. Is there anybody here from the public that would like to comment? Please, sorry. Come and introduce yourself for the, for the record, please.
Captain Larry, Lambert Street, and I just had a procedural question. This hearing was supposed to open on August 24th and it did not. And no one was re-noticed. So how can this be a continued hearing?
The last, this meeting was continued to an August meeting that we did not have. And then we didn't have, we didn't have any July, half of the July meetings we didn't have. This is the first time that the board is together in the last three or four meetings. I brought this up with the town clerk because it was a question that came up. And it was something that hadn't happened and nobody knew exactly the answer. I'm being honest with you. So the outcome was that during any continuation of a meeting, the public is, the proponent is not expected to continue to notify the public. The public is responsible for keeping an eye on public notices to know when that public, well, again, it's supposed to be on a certain date and then that the public's supposed to keep an eye on the public notices to make sure that it is on that day. The date that it was on, we didn't have a meeting. So basically, it was just continued until our next meeting is what the outcome ended up being.
Well, I understand that. This is ultimately a job and Mass General Law says that if you have a public hearing, if you have to open it and continue it to a date and time certain, so if that's not done, then you have to re-notify people. Because there's no one here from the neighborhood because I don't think, I was, of course, I'm watching it, but I don't think anybody knows that this meeting is even going on.
And you know this because you said it's your job and your job is?
I am assistant to the planner in another town.
Okay, okay. Thank you for the input. Like I said, this was something that did come up and right now, we don't have an assistant planner. We don't have a planner. So unfortunately, I didn't have the ability to get that answer for, for you or anybody
Can I ask a question on that?
Please.
So when you sent out your certified mailings, what did the notice say?
I don't recall exactly what the notice said.
I mean, for a date, not, not word for word, just what date did it tell the Abutters that the applicant was going to have?
I think the first meeting was on May 25th, I believe. So the first notice would have said that we'll be presenting in front of the planning board on the, on May 25th. And then during the May 25th meeting, we were continued.
So that was, is that the last time we actually talked about this?
No, we, yes, that's the last time we spoke about this, but the meeting that this was continued to, we didn't have a meeting.
Okay.
And then the following two meetings, we didn't have meetings because there was nothing on the agenda.
Okay.
And then again, I didn't have anybody writing the agenda.
It's kind of a legal question. My understanding is once the Abutters have notified, we have a public hearing and then it's continued. Yes, it's continued to a date certain, but the applicant has a right to submit a letter requesting a continuance any other date. to submit a letter requesting a continuance any other date in the future, which I presume you've done. Have you submitted letters asking for continuances on and on since we've, because it's been continued more or less on your end because you were dealing with conservation issues and other environmental permitting, is that?
Yeah, I mean, we have been in coordination with the planning office, we've called a number of times and haven't been able to reach anyone, just to make sure that we were on top of the process, because we were happy to procedurally comply with whatever was required of us. And we did submit the revised plans a week or two ago, and we were happy to incorporate whatever procedural elements needed to present tonight in a way that was compliant with, you know, with the town's regulations. And the feedback we received, I think, was that the revised plans were received and that we were all set to present tonight.
I mean, it's an interesting question, but I'm not sure where you can go with it. I mean, if they're notice to a certain time and date for a meeting, but we don't have a meeting, we can't act on it. This is the first meeting that we've had the board together that we can act on anything. So I-
Exactly, you have to re-notify them.
I don't know that that's the case, I mean, to be quite honest with you.
Again, that's a legal question that I do not know the answer to.
I mean, I have the notice right here, August 24th.
That was, what, is that a posted?
You want to say it?
A posted note, yes, if you don't mind. Well, I guess what I'm not, I'm trying to get, I haven't got the answer clear in my head, is that we had a hearing on May 25th. That night, we continued it to a date, I remember, what did it say, July? What was the request of the meeting?
July 13th.
Okay.
July 13th? So what happened as we approached July 13th? Did we meet on the 13th?
No.
We didn't?
We didn't meet until I go.
Okay, so it was canceled on our end, and then when was our next meeting after that?
And then it was re-noticed, which is the, what is in front of you.
Nothing on the agenda because they weren't ready.
So this notice says that the public hearing was supposed to be on August 24th, and what happened on that day?
We didn't have a meeting on August 24th.
Was it because we didn't have enough members, or?
It was, at the point, there was nothing on the agenda, but that was on the agenda.
Did they ask for a continuance, or?
I do not-
We did ask for a continuance, and I don't know who my colleagues spoke to at the town, but we were given a continuance, and there was just no meeting for the next few meetings.
Did you do that in writing?
I believe it was Patricia, who I think no longer is assisting you.
We asked her if we needed to send a cancellation, we were told no. We asked if we needed to send additional notices of the continuation, we were told no.
And who did you speak?
Patricia. She was the one that left, she was, she was kind of helping out the, she was a clerk doing, for the building and planning department. She left a couple of weeks ago. Okay, this isn't something that we can resolve here because we don't have the answer here, okay? The only thing I can say is, I will find out through council what we should have done and what we can do to remedy the situation. It's possible, like Rick said, we might not have been required, they might not have been required to send out notices, or maybe we should have had them send out notices again.
I mean, in our municipality, you can send out notices because there's no way for an butter to know if you don't have the hearing, there's no way for us to know that there's an email saying we're continuing to-
I'm not denying what you're saying.
I'm just saying we-
Yep, yep.
What our council tells us.
And if-
I got a suggestion, I have a suggestion. We could continue for two weeks and ask them to represent the same thing and ask them to, I don't think, I think it's punitive to ask them to do certified, the list must be huge, it must be a big list. You could send it all regular mail, and then everybody, and just, I mean-
Can you though? There's a reason why it's certified.
Well, there is, but the technicality is, do they really, if they're not required to, it'd be more of a courtesy notification to everybody. People talk, right? One person doesn't get their mail, or they don't care to go to the mailbox, the next neighbor say, hey, you know, the meeting, I got a piece of paper here, the meeting's on the, whatever, the next date, and it's like a, you know-
Why don't we get a definitive answer from council?
Okay.
Let me get a definitive answer from town council. Worst-case scenario, you have to notify the butters, and you have to come back and present what you just presented again. Other scenario is that there was no need, and we continue this meeting, I'm going to say not for the two weeks, but the following meeting, and, because that'll give you time because you're going to notify, and it'll be two weeks for notification. So let me, let me find out, that's all I can say. And right now, all I would say is everything was presented, I think we're at the end of your presentation, let's continue this, we're not going to close it, let's continue this.
I wasn't clear, so where are you guys going with this, as far as, it sounded like you wanted a continuance for way down the road?
We don't want a continuance, we would like you to vote tonight.
Well, I, I, I'm not comfortable because of the traffic issue. I understand what you're saying, that you don't anticipate doing construction until at least the springtime, based on your permitting schedule, but I just feel like things get forgotten real simple, really easy, for, things that fall through the cracks and the traffic plan.
That's why we'd like to make the traffic plan a condition of our approval tonight.
I'd like to see it. I'd like the neighbors to have input. I think it's an important aspect of how this thing gets done, and I don't think it's asking too much for you to put something together on a map and in writing and go talk to the police chief and them, and to get their input, you know, and, you know, like Dan's going to know the future of what roads, or at least have an idea, they have a pavement management plan, so they have a general idea, you know, as far as that goes. Police chief is going to have ideas, and obviously, you know, there can be a caveat that it's subject to change because something changed, and there could be a caveat that could be revisited if need be by those, you know, two gentlemen who were in the capacity of police chief and the highway department, but I just think it's important, it's important to me to get it into the permit process. I think it's important for the neighbors to understand who's going to get the traffic and who isn't, and why. There's going to be a reason, right? We're obviously not going to pick the longest route, you know, to go down if they get there.
Can I ask you a question? Now, you got Army Corps of Engineers, you got a lot of things going on, you got at least, like you said, six months before anything happens. How would we be slowing you down if we did not vote tonight and we continued? Would we be slowing you down any? What could or couldn't you do if we voted or if we continued?
We could still move forward, but we're going to be spending tens of thousands, if not more, in the permitting process to go through the MEPA approval on the Army Corps of Engineers. It gives us the ability to move forward through that process confidently, knowing that there is not another, another board that we are still going to be asking for their, for their approval of this modification. The whole point of us going through the water quality certification, Army Corps of Engineers and MEPA process, is because of this road modification, and without approval of the modification, it makes us, it doesn't give us as much confidence as we would like to move forward through that process. So you're right, it doesn't necessarily slow us down, but it is, it is an impact to our ability to move forward with this modification.
But I will say this, in the MEPA process, there's a litany of things you have to look at, one of its traffic and impacts to the neighborhood. So this can only help you by working it out with the town as to how we would prefer it to be done. Am I wrong?
No, I think one thing I was envisioning was, if this were to be manifested in the form of a condition of approval, that there could be some sort of notification to the public so that we could meet with the Department of Public Works, the police, and the public in a public space and talk about it all as a group, you know, weeks or months leading up to construction. So if we do it right now, you know, there's a lot of lost time between now and construction. So if we were to put a detailed condition of approval in there to that effect, I think that's potentially a really effective solution. Just a thought.
Pat, give me your two cents.
Okay, so I agree with Dave that traffic is an important part of the MEPA process, and they actually run the risk of bumping into a supplemental environmental impact report if they don't have their traffic right, and too many comments come in from the neighbors about traffic. But something that needs to be part of their traffic plan is hours of operation and the maximum number of truck trips per day. You need to put a cap on the maximum number of trips a day and the hours of operation.
I agree with that 100%.
And if Mrs. Murray is correct, we backpedal in anyway, because it's going to get us into a pickle.
I mean, we certainly have to resolve whether there's a procedural defect or not. I mean, that's, that to me is a given. You know, on the other hand, you know, there basically are two ways to access this project. I can't, and I'm trying to put my foot in my mouth here, but I can't see the board denying them the right to access their property. I can see conditions being put on that, but in terms of it being a project killer, I don't see that. Turtle Habitat could have been a project killer, MEPA can be a project killer, but the right to access the property, I don't, I'm not going to, I personally am not going to stand in the way of somebody trying to access their property to do work on it, as long as it's a reasonable proposal, and to my eyes, they have, they have done or are on the way to completing what they have to do to make the board comfortable. You know, whether, certainly, this traffic management plan is something that we asked for some months ago, and it doesn't look like anything has been done towards that at all, and I've got to say, I am disappointed in that respect. It's not a difficult thing to put together, and I really don't understand why we don't have one tonight to look at and act on, because it is an important part of getting this project done. We also have a procedural problem that we're not going to vote on it tonight anyway, or I'm not going to vote on it tonight anyway, I don't know about the rest of the board. So you're not, you're not going to get your approval tonight, I don't believe, you know, we've certainly got to poll the rest of the board.
I'm going to, I'm going to have to agree. We're going to continue, we're going to make a motion to continue this until I get clarification. I don't want to fall into open meeting violations of any sort, I need to get clarification on this and then continue.
I agree with Mr. Ellis, this is an approvable project. The property owner has a right to access his property, and this is a better solution than the other street. The other street was problematic for a lot of reasons, just getting trucks in and out of that corner and being, you know, limited to a 20-foot strip due to the rights or whatever the legal issues were. And so I don't, I don't think this board's going to be an obstacle in your, you know, myriad of permitting, and I don't think a couple of weeks is going to make a difference. It's not going to hurt you. I just want to make sure we, I want to make sure the neighborhood knows where the work is going to be done. I think it's not too much to ask what Mr. Hanlon asked for, you know, I think that's a great idea, there should be a limitation. People should know, you know, some guy sitting on his porch on a July 2nd, and he's, I already counted 30 trucks today, that's it, there should be no more, you know, I'm going to enjoy the rest of my day, you know, and that should be the, you know, there's no reason why we can't put those and have that in front of us. I think it's imperative that, if we're going to issue a permit, everybody should know what we're issuing a permit for, not down the road, I just don't, I just think it's too important to put a condition on the project and hope, hope down the road that somebody's paying attention and that that's followed. And I don't want to put it on somebody else, the police chief's highway survey, to have to, you know, somebody pointing the finger, oh, it fell through the cracks, oh, well, it's not my fault, the planning, it is our duty to issue a permit that I think is comprehensive and covers as best as we can, protects the neighbors, so. And a continuation will allow at least another posting, maybe we pay for a legal ad to put it in the paper, you know, that there's going to be a public hearing. If town council says, you know, they don't have to re-notify butters, well, maybe we as the town should at least send out regular notifications. I mean, one way or the other, I'd like to see at least regular mailings go out to everybody on that list, whether we pay for it or they pay for it.
Okay, I would make a motion to continue action on this proposal to our next meeting, and if we have to continue it after, again, then we continue it again, you know, waiting for our legal counsel opinion.
What is it, two weeks has taken us to October 5th?
Two weeks to October 5th.
Okay. Do we want to lap those meetings together? I don't know if it's going to get pretty busy in here or not, because that same October 5th is all we're going to be, we already have another public hearing scheduled for a bylaw review.
We do, but I got a gut feeling that we will be continuing the October 5th for that.
Now, what's our schedule, is it the second, it's the second and fourth Thursdays, right?
It is, but we might have a special meeting after the 5th for the articles.
Okay, so my point is, if we continue, it's really, it should be three weeks to the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Yeah.
Yes.
Which actually allow, it works out well. I would definitely schedule it to our next regular meeting.
I'll second his motion.
Our next regular meeting is October 5th.
It's October 5th.
I thought that was a special meeting.
No, we have 5th and 19th is regular, the 12th is going to be a special.
Oh, okay, so it's the 5th.
The 5th, the 5th is the one, then.
I got a motion.
And I second.
Oh, favor?
Aye.
We will get back to you on that, on the wording, and one way or another, the public will be notified of the next meeting.
I think that's what I appreciate, though.
Again, we don't have a clear, and unfortunately, things-
Maybe you need at least a consult with your-
We need something.
Planning consultant?
Yeah, if you're looking for a job.
Maybe.
Come apply.
In order on between now and the next meeting, who should we be contacting to get information about notices or, you know, potential cancellations of meetings?
Yeah, Paul, Paul is back with us, Paul was with us back in the spring, he left for the summer, now he's back helping us out again until we can hopefully get our feet back in more permanent hires. But just call the planning board, email, I know Sarah Hussein has emailed Paul, and he hasn't answered, but now he's back, so he will answer, keeps CCing me, and we will get back to you.
Great, thank you, and is he part-time still?
He is, so usually, you're looking at Monday through Wednesday, 9 to 12-ish around there.
Okay, thank you.
That's Paul Sullivan.
Yes, Paul Sullivan. And again, I mean- And again, I mean, I'll apologize for the board. This did fall through the cracks. I will say for the record, Sincafa has been reaching out and being very transparent as possible, as best as you possibly could with the situation that we're in. You're not like other proponents that we've had that, you know, are hiding and are not doing what they're asked of. You are. This mistake was on our, on our end.
Except for the traffic plan.
Thank you.
Except for the traffic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Can I get a motion to close the public portion, of the public hearing portion of this meeting?
Motion to close.
So I continue.
Oh, yeah, we gotta continue it.
Oh, yes.
No, we didn't, we didn't.
No, well, you already continued it.
You continued, you made a motion to continue, eh?
You want a motion to go out of this public hearing and into the right.
Right, we already made a motion to continue.
We did, we did continue.
Yes, okay. Motion to go out.
Motion to go into the second meeting session.
Motion to go back into regular session, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Discussion on other topics. Site plan review. Plan entitled Deep Brook Estates of Cushing, Massachusetts. Revision to the plan dated May 18th, 2023 to a previously approved plan. The engineers Zenith Consulting Engineering LLC, Lakeville, Mass. We do. Let's have a push on that side.
That day if you push it over.
As long as we don't lose some of our foot.
Yeah, fine.
I am not familiar with this one, actually.
So for the record, my name is Rainy Gagnon. Zenith Consulting Engineers on behalf of the applicant, Jose Castillo. And just for clarification, I don't think this was a site plan review. This was originally.
Is it a site plan modification, is it?
Subdivision modification.
Subdivision modification.
Yeah, Paul? Subdivision modification.
Right, so this was a.
Let me ask a question.
Sure.
Does this require a bonus notifications?
No, no.
I don't believe it does. We've already approved this. We consider it a minor modification.
Okay.
I mean, if, if it were, if it were any other way, every time they wanted to change the location of one rock on a plan would be in a new public hearing. So I mean, that's, that's, that's the key thing is, is whether we consider it a minor or a major modification, so.
Is that what we determine?
That's still, that's still, that's still up in the air, whether it's a minor or a major.
I just don't wanna get it for the same.
I mean, I, I don't know the answer to that other one. I mean, if we don't have a meeting, it's their, I mean, it's their responsibility to check in at the meeting. If we don't have one, then I, I would think it would be their responsibility to check in to the next meeting. And if we didn't have a meeting.
I think that's what the town council's gonna.
I, I, I don't know. I don't know on that one.
Let's just get the answer from the town council.
Okay.
Please.
Just a quick recap of the, of the project itself. It's a 15-lot residential subdivision that was approved for definitive subdivision by Planning Board and approved by COMCOM in 2017. The original applicant was Michael and John Coska. And the original design engineer was GAF Engineering, who are no longer involved with the project. In 2022, the current applicant, Jose Castillo, obtained the project. And then when he went to try to build it, he was informed that a stormwater permit had never been issued for the project. In February of '23, he hired Zenith to apply for the stormwater permit. And we went through a new review process with Beals and Thomas through COMCOM acting as a stormwater board. Over that process, we made a few changes to the design of the stormwater design only. We didn't, we made no changes to the layout, the scope of the project, even the limited work. Everything stayed the same. We just, I can go over the handful of changes that we did make. We added some water quality units to the, the structure and pipe design to provide extra water quality. Yeah, water quality improvements. We also, to increase the infiltration capacity of the system, we converted one basin into an infiltration basin. It was originally designed by GAF as just a normal detention basin. So to improve the, the volume control, runoff volume control to meet the stormwater regulations, we, we had, again, converted that basin. Nothing else changed on the basin other than some, again, some small details in the nature of the basin itself. Another one of the basins, Basin 2, it was, it was pointed out by, by Beals and Thomas that that basin was intercepting groundwater, so we, we added a liner to that basin and raised, raised it up and added a liner so that it would not get any groundwater infiltration. That's essentially all, all the changes that we made. We did provide, added detail for the roof drainage infiltration systems, another, another component that would help with the volume control to meet those stormwater rigs. So the other plan you have in front of you is a, once we got the approval from, from COMCOM acting as the stormwater board, we were going through the plans and actually the contractor noticed that the detail for the head wall on the original plans wasn't gonna work with what they were, what the layout was of, of the head walls that are for the crossings at Deep Brook and at the cross. So Deep Brook is here, there's an existing culvert. We're gonna, we were, the design was to install two new head walls there. There's, there's sort of just boulders now that, that surround the culvert. But the detail that they provided on their plan wasn't, it was just sort of like your standard cookie cutter type of head wall detail. But when we were looking at it, we realized it's gonna need something a little more accustomed-made, if you will. And so the applicant didn't want to just go ahead and make that change without bringing it before this commission so that down the road, when he goes to have the roadway accepted, you know, somebody notices, hey, this is not what was on the original plan. So.
Good idea.
That, yeah, so that's what, that's the other plan that you have in front of you. So I mean, that, that's essentially the long and short of the changes we're, we are proposing and hoping that the commission finds that this is a minor modification.
Can I ask questions?
Please.
So that plan, that's the original subdivision plan?
So this is, this, this plan that you're looking at here, this is our plan that shows, it shows all the modifications that we made. The original plan I have here, if you want, if you do.
No, I don't wanna see that. I'm just curious, so the drainage ponds are the same as what they look like on the original?
The shape, the shape is all, they're all the same.
Roads are all the same?
Say again?
The road, the roadway layout?
The roadway layout is complete, nothing was changed in that respect.
And stormwater, and we have water but not sewer, these septic, right?
Correct.
Okay, did the original subdivision plan have all the houses that you're showing with?
They didn't show a layout of the house. We did that actually at the request of Beals and Thomas during the stormwater review. They wanted us to confirm that.
Yep.
A, that we could fit everything, but also to get a more accurate representation.
Right, right, conceptual, that's the way. Because I remember looking at this when the subdivision, back in '17, when I came to the Board of Health.
Yep.
And they had wet ponds.
Right.
And, you know.
And they, they did away with that.
We, we asked them to get rid of them because of mosquito issues, serious mosquito issues. So I remember, I remember making comments. I don't remember ever seeing that, which is what you should be doing.
Right.
Laying out all the houses and where the drainage patterns are gonna end up. And more or less, it seems a conceptual thing.
Right, this is not a final, like, these house locations.
Right, yeah, it's just.
It's sort of like a conceptual rating, just to show.
Run the model, yeah.
Right, yeah, exactly.
So, so we're here basically just, just for head walls?
Head walls, and then just give us the okay that the, the changes, the stormwater system.
I, I spoke to Pat yesterday. Pat, go ahead, see your hand up, go ahead.
Yeah, so I, I actually spoke to, well, I met with you, Mark, yesterday. And then I spoke to Jamie Bissinat this afternoon. And it's my feeling that the head walls is a minor change. And I spoke to the chairman of the Conservation Commission, who was actually on Zoom as well, and told him that I'd like to represent you folks. If this is gonna be just an administrative approval by the commission, there won't be a public hearing on this. This is a, a very minor change, and it's something that I think that Beals and Thomas missed in the, in the review. But I am interested in hearing what Rainy has to say about changes to stormwater because we don't know about any other changes to stormwater. But we're fine with the head wall. That's gonna be a letter that I'm gonna issue. And my end's on if Brian wants to say anything.
I, I have one question. The, the boulders?
Right.
The boulders installed, proposed head wall, but it doesn't say, are you gonna reinstall the boulders after? Are we gonna put in a, a nice guard rail? One, the three-footer doesn't need it, that's off the pavement, looks like 12, 15 feet. But, but the other one is significant, that's a major head wall. You got top wall of 78 and bottom wall, well, you get inverted, 71. So you got a seven-and-a-half-foot drop there. That's pretty dangerous. So my question is, is there a head wall proposed? I mean, a, a guard rail for the, the big head wall?
You talking about this one here or on the other side?
The, the, the east of the one.
We weren't showing it, but I think that's, that's something we definitely could add.
So you got a significant drop.
Yeah.
It's just, you know, something went over. That's, that's pretty significant.
That's, outside of that, okay, but it's a minor, in my opinion, it's a minor.
And did you ask for Zenith, the set of plans for the commission with you folks tonight? So I can grab them tomorrow.
So are they, so we got two crossings or is it one?
Two crossings. Well, well, one is the Deep Brook itself, and the other is a.
Which one is, which one is which? The one that says Deep Brook is Deep Brook? Is that it? Okay.
So we're with the 48-inch pipe.
Okay.
This is Deep Brook.
So you can see it up here.
Section B. Yeah, so that's, so we got a four-foot drop here, we got a six-and-a-half-foot drop here. I just think it's.
A guard rail would be certainly a good safety measure there.
And it can be.
Actually, on, on all of them, it's really, is really not a bad idea.
Yeah.
I mean, it is a hazard, especially in this state of people texting and driving at the same time.
Yeah. And I would say if, if the road's gonna be, if the intention is to turn it into a public way, then you should meet whatever, you know, Dan Menard requires for.
For a guard rail.
Yeah. If it was gonna be a private way, you could put a wooden guard rail, you know, that's fine. But that, that can be just added.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would think, guard rail like the standard state guard rail.
Yeah.
You know, galvanized, single beam, not triple beam, we don't need that. But the single beam Massachusetts Department of Public Works standard guard rail wood posts. Now, I don't know if they, they don't do wood posts, do they?
Yeah, they still do. I still see them going in.
Yeah.
Not, not so much on the highway, it's on a, you know, travel on 495, but there are other areas that seem going in and they put, they're dropping in with posts.
Yeah, about Lake Street.
Yeah, and I was gonna say the same thing on Lake Street. We got wood posts and, and wood guard rails down there. I mean, this is, this is, this is a development over here. So I think something a little bit more, it would warrant something a little bit more attractive, but obviously meeting the criteria of a wood.
I guess the wood post with the metal, the metal guard, single, single-faced guard rail. Single, make a tri-beam one and a single-beam one. The single-beam one is, is fine. But, yeah, that would be a good idea. Certainly better than boulders.
Yeah.
So now do they have to modify the plan and get us a modified plan that shows the guard rail on it?
We can make a motion subject to.
Yeah, approval by Dan Menard. I mean, to be quite, I mean, he's the one that's gonna end up taking care of it.
I mean, I, I think, I mean, unless anybody has anything else, I'll, I'll make that motion. I consider it a minor, minor project modification of the subdivision. And it's, the approval is subject to a revised plan being submitted, showing guard rails that are approved by Dan Menard. So in other words, talk to Dan Menard, ask him what he wants, whatever he says is fine with us. And put it on the plan, submit it to our office, but we're making a motion to approve.
Yeah, I would certainly consider this a minor modification. There's no question about that.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Have a good night.
We have, Pat. Thank you very much for attending.
Have a nice night.
Have a good night.
Absolutely, I knew it's here.
They dropped.
It's like, like coming off a pretty old road or anything to the, to the old ceramic shop over there. It took years to get one of those in place, too.
Yeah.
I remember, it was wide open.
All right, let's move on. Next on the agenda is solar special permit extension request. Distributors Solar Development LLC, DSD, New Leaf Energy, 52 Morse's Lane. Plans and company documentation are available for inspection at the town clerk's office, Parting Way Building, 130 Main Street, first floor during regular business hours. A motion, well, let me, let me give a little bit of background for the public. Massachusetts state law had all special permits at two years. I think back in July of 2021, something to do with COVID or whatever their reasoning was, the state changed special permit time from two years to three years. We were not aware of the change until recently. Back in May, we had a few solar projects whose special permits, which we thought were expiring, came in front of us for an extension. One being this one, the one right here at 52 Morse's Lane. The board, back in May 25th, made the motion to not extend the solar special permit extension. It was voted for in favor, and there was one absent. Tonight, we are here because of the new information. We are here to make a motion to rescind the motion to deny the extension that we made of the, of the special permit. I'd like to hear a motion to rescind the decision to deny. the decision to deny special permit for 52 Morse's Lane.
But before I make that motion, isn't it a pointless motion? Because the state overrides?
The state does override, but I was told that we need to publicly rescind our vote.
Okay.
To extend even though we didn't need to extend.
We're not extending. We're just rescinding the vote to deny.
Yeah.
Okay.
Based on a new MGL.
Right, so they go until 2024.
They are now, from what I gather, and we, they now have for Morse's Lane, their special permit expires on 7/15/2024.
If I may.
Please stand up and introduce yourself.
Yeah, Brandon Smith, New Leaf Energy. I just wanted to clarify, I think, one other piece or item that the applicant, New Leaf Energy, requested the board kind of read into the record was not only rescinding that denial, but also acknowledging or agreeing with the three-year extension. I think that was, that was another piece that, just to kind of clarify, clarify these.
The three-year extension?
The, I'm sorry, yes. I'm sorry, the three-year.
Greg Santos, Sullivan and Worcester. I think I wrote the letter you're looking at, consulting.
No, we're not looking at it. I think, I know what you're talking about, but yeah, I understand what you're saying. We can agree that your original special permit was for three years.
Exactly. Yeah, appreciate it. And we really appreciate the time. I know there's.
No, I mean, again, if we, if we were notified, that would have never have come up. If we would have known that it was changed to three years, we would have never voted on it. It just never would have come up.
It wouldn't have. It went past.
And you guys, if you guys want to know, it's, I gotta just say this. It's not the fault of the board from what I understand. There's very few towns that even.
Nobody knew about the change from two years to three years.
You guys didn't even know about it as well. So, so yeah, with that being said, that's, that's it.
The thing about, I just want to throw a little more clarity out there, too, though. If, if it's in your bylaws, your regulations.
Yes.
That you have two years and most towns have that in there. For instance, Rochester has two years. We don't. We're looking to correct that in the future. You guys are off the hook. So I'll make a motion that in lieu of finding out that the state recognizes that special permits are good for three years, unless a town has a bylaw that says otherwise, that we rescind the denial that was voted on on May 25, 2023 for Distributed Solar Development, New Leaf Energy, 52 Morse's Lane.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, do we need another motion to acknowledge that permit runs for three years from today? Make it, okay?
I'll make a motion that we acknowledge that their, the permit for 52 Morse's Lane is valid for three years based on state law until July 15, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And while we're on the subject, there were actually two on that day, two votes for two different solar special permits. The second one also by New Leaf Energy for 251 Mendel Road. Again, the same story. They came in for an extension. We didn't know. We voted to deny from lack of any type of work or action on the property. That's the reason why it was denied. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion that in lieu of finding out the state recognizes special permits valid for three years, that we rescind the vote to deny the extension request, which was issued, voted on on May 25, 2023, for Distributed Solar Development LLC, 251 Mendel Road is the project site.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
What is the date on that one?
Can I get another motion to?
I want to make a motion that we acknowledge that their permit is valid for a three-year period with an expiration date according to Mark's notes, March 5, 2024.
Actually, I think you agree with those dates, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And we did want to just let the board know. I mean, there was obviously a lot of information that the board had asked for in May that we hadn't provided. It's one of those situations where there's a lot going on in the background for this project, these two projects, that the local issues were actually one of the easier things. The interconnection process was the problem. And I think, just to be clear, that we really can't apply to get allocated in the interconnection queue until we have the site plan approval. So that's one of the things that drives this schedule. And I, we're working in so many towns right now asking for extensions. And it's frustrating to the towns to see projects they approve not move forward. But it's the way, unfortunately, the smart program is set up, is we have to, to get the allocation, we need the local discretionary approvals. And then you're stuck in the interconnection process. So, you know, this, we are hopeful to get a construction schedule from Eversource by the end of this year. At that time, we'll come back. We'll talk to the board. We'll give them more information. We'll show you everything we've been doing in the background. Likely, we're going to be asking for further extension just to allow us to time the project out with Eversource's upgrades. And we just want, we recognize that we didn't give you the information you hoped for before. We just want to reiterate that there's a lot of work and investment going down in the background. And we look forward to trying to bring these projects forward, answering any questions, providing more information, and hopefully get to construction.
I would suggest that if you do come in for another extension request, that the package that you put together for us to demonstrate what you have been doing to keep this thing going, present one to us.
Absolutely.
Don't just ask for an extension because we want an extension, which is basically what the last one did.
Yeah, definitely. And I think, yeah. In addition, I think, Mary, we understand that kind of coming out of nowhere. So we don't want to do that again. And as Greg mentioned, at that schedule, we're hoping to get that. And I think as soon as we get that, we'll have more clarity. And we'll come, you know, we'll request to come in front of the board, we're communicating in some way, even if it's not requesting the extension at that time, to just give us more clarity so that you're aware of kind of what the path forward looks like and we have a little bit more clear dates.
That's fine.
Fair enough.
We appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next. This one, this was a solar special permit extension request for 540R Main Street, Christian Masch. The engineer is Atlantic Design Engineers. The plans and the company documentation are available for the town for inspection at the town clerk's office, Parting Way Building, 130 Main Street, first floor during regular business hours. The town has confirmed the special permit are subject to three years lapse period for the MGL. The opponent expects to have decommissioning estimate for you. So this one is, they've requested a continuation to the October 19th meeting. They have a meeting with Eversource in the very, very near future, so we're told. And they will have a decommissioning plan at that time.
Question?
Shoot.
Where's 540R?
That's. 540R.
Flying Cloud.
Flying Cloud.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
540 rear, come back. And I looked into it and the expiration on their three-year special permit is also on July 15, 2024.
So they don't even have to request anything?
They're not requesting an extension. Well, they were in requesting an extension. We did not deny or approve. We needed more information.
That allows their con con?
Con con issue, yes. So that was, I don't know if it was continued or whatever it was at the time. I wasn't there on that meeting.
But they're good until July.
But they're good until July anyways.
Why are they asking for an extension?
They're asking for an extension because they were scheduled to be at this meeting. So they're asking for a continuance to the October 19th until they have more information.
But they, why would they need to ask for an extension of their permit if it's valid until?
Not extension of their permit.
Discussionable.
Yeah, it was the discussion. They, they came in front of you because, yeah, you're right. They came in front of you because we thought their permit was expired.
Yes.
At that time, we didn't know it was three years. We continued it.
Okay, yeah, got it. So why would they have to come before? Is that good until 2020? Oh, because they don't, they never got their decommissioning approved?
No, they haven't got their decommissioning approved and they're going to come back with some of the answers that we requested and have you.
Okay.
Even though they have until.
Clarify the whole issue. Okay, cool.
Okay. Current planner?
Do we, do we need to extend it to October 19th?
Yes.
Motion to extend the discussion to October 19th as requested.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Long range planner? We don't have a planner yet. I will, let me fill in a little bit there. There's been discussion on the selectmen's meeting. There's been discussion by Jamie Kelly, the town administrator. There's been some, some things spoken by the selectmen. So basically, what we're looking to attempt to do is join forces with Matter Poise. They've been looking for a town planner. We've been looking for a town planner. We might join forces, see if we can hire somebody so it's part-time for them, part-time for us. The process of getting them to approve and acknowledge and agree is in the process. So far, what I'm told, everybody's in agreeance. There's only one or two more people that need to weigh in on the matter. We've also, I've also heard from the selectmen that because we're now going for a part-time planner, that we are not going to share our clerk with the building department. We will have our 19-hour part-time clerk back once, right now Paul's there. And Paul will fill in for a little while, but we will start looking for somebody to replace Paul. Please. I just wanted to give you a quick update.
No, that's great. There's been some movement on this marvelous.
Yeah, well, I don't know about movement, but talking.
I mean, it's fortunate that a lot of the solar array stuff has slowed down some.
Yeah.
I mean, that's helped tremendously.
Yeah, but I mean, we had a situation tonight that, I mean, should never have happened. And if we had a town planner, it's true, it would have happened.
Oh, I understand.
And from what I gather, I have, I'm not 100%, but what I'm told is Matter Poise has been looking for a planner for a couple of years now. And they can't find it. They've changed, they've changed the wording and they're trying to get people in. And it's not only Matter Poise. I've gone online. There's lots of towns that don't have town planners. So if we can join forces, maybe increase the rate a little bit with a 50-50 pay thing.
Sure. It's got to be financially attractive to somebody or it's not going to happen.
Hopefully, we can, yeah, get somebody that sees that and maybe we can get somebody in here. But just to let you know that I am, I am on top of it. I've been pushing the people in this building to get things going. And trust me, it's been difficult. So that's that on long-range planning. On other business, any other business that may probably come before the board, not reasonably anticipated within posting the 48 hours of this meeting. Okay, so we have a town meeting coming up November 4th, 6th? I'm not exactly 100% sure, but early November, we have a town meeting. There are a couple of articles that are going to be on the warrant that pertain to the planning board. I just wanted to kind of get the discussion moving a little bit. This is going to be posted, the ad, the date to the ad on September 21st and again on September 28th. This one is the one I want to talk about first, which is, this meeting is, this is what was put in the ad, is what I'm reading. This meeting is held in accordance with the chapter 48, section 5, to consider the following warrant article. To see if the town will vote to amend Acushna zoning bylaw, section 3, 4, 3 and 4, special permit requirement, article 8 zoning of the general code, accepted by the town meeting April 22, 1997, and most recently amended on December 28, 2022, by inserting the following text after the second section that says, "A special permit elapsed is not exercised within two years from the date of the decision, including time for determination of an appeal or take any other action relative thereto, the accompanying documentation are available." That's what I was going to say. Basically, the documentation is at the town clerk's office, Parting Way Building. It should be there. The draft, if they're not all 100% done, because that will be 100% done once we're done. But the draft is at the town clerk's office at the Parting Way Building at regular hours to view. This one's a quick one. I just wanted to bring this one up first. This is basically, just like David mentioned earlier, most towns have a time limit on their special permit by law. We did not, so we automatically default to what the state has. The state is at three. We want to have wording in our, all of our special permits, not just solar, but all special permits in town, which will say there is a two-year time period. In a nutshell, that's what that one's for.
Okay.
Unless anybody has anything they wish to discuss or change about that. Again, we are going to have a meeting on October 5th to discuss all three of these in more detail. This is just a banter back and forth for us. Let the town and the people know what's coming down the pipe. The second one, this meeting is held in accordance with chapter 48, section 5, to consider the following warrant article. To see if the town will vote to delete the present language of article 4 Stormwater Management Bylaw of the Town of Acushna, general bylaws, and replacing the article in its entirety with new language. The company documentation are available for inspection at the town clerk's office, Parting Way Building, 130 Main Street, first floor, at regular hours. So basically, the, if I'm not mistaken, the old Bob Rocha, the, used to be the chair of the Conservation, he and I think Pat Hannon, and I think the Conservation Board, basically took the stormwater bylaw. They tweaked it a little bit. They made a couple of changes here and there. And basically, that's what we're going to vote in as our stormwater bylaw. Again, you are going to get the entirety to view. Hopefully, by Monday, you should have the draft. The town clerk should have the draft for everybody to read by tomorrow. But that's just something that we will look at. You will read over. Let me know if there's anything on there that you don't like, that you want to change. And then I think, once it's voted on at town meeting, then it officially falls into Conservation's lap and no longer ours.
Right, so it's, we're going to be taking something out of? Is that, is this a two-thirds vote? Is this a charter change, actually a charter change?
I don't know. Has to go to the town attorney general's office.
Everything does. All of these go.
Right. I assume that the, are, you know, all language will be posted on the website by Pam for anybody to access?
I don't know if it's going to be posted on the website. I know it's at her office for people to come and see. But until it's actually, until they're voted upon and approved, then it'll be posted on the website. But I don't know if the draft will be posted on the website.
Can you ask her if it can be posted? Is it, you know, draft?
There are things that have been wanted posted on our website for over a year.
It's just, it makes it easy if somebody, if they're interested, they can just go to the website and print it out, you know?
I'll see.
Rather than go down to the.
That's a good point.
I mean, all, as long as it says draft for town meeting.
Yep.
It's all it is, it doesn't mean anything, it could be voted down.
I'll see what we can do.
Okay, then you don't have to pass it around to any of us, because we can get it on town meeting.
It'll be emailed to you.
All right, well, I'm just trying to make it easy for the general public.
Yeah, um, I mean, it's, it's, it's basically a lot of the same wording from what the bylaw is there now. Uh, you'll see a couple of red lines in there and a couple of add-ons, but very, very little. But it's basically what's there now. There isn't a, a whole bunch of changes.
Yeah, I mean, somebody might get scared when they see delete the whole thing.
Right, they didn't just.
And replace the whole thing.
Right, they didn't do that, no.
It's, well, that's what the language says. It sounds monumental what you're saying, it's just typo, you know, you know, cleaning it up.
It's not monumental, in my opinion.
Well. You saw it, I didn't saw it.
All right, this one, last one, now, this is the one I feel is gonna take the most discussion, uh, between the board and, uh, has the most, um, involved. This meeting is held in accordance with chapter forty-eight, section five, to consider the following warrant article. To see if the town will vote to amend article eight zoning bylaw of the town of Acushnet, general bylaw, by adding section three, use regulation, a new subsection, three-point-three-point-seven, special residential development over fifty-five housing. The purpose of the special residential development, special permit, are to grant relief in the form of increased density to encourage housing needed to the town of Acushnet, such as providing alternative housing for a maturing population. Providing the type of housing which will reduce residents' burden of property maintenance, which reduces demand on municipal services. First, the purpose of this bylaw, for the purpose of this bylaw, excuse me. The term special residential development is defined as a residential development for, of municipal dwellings, multiple dwellings, dwelling units configured as attached or detached single-family dwellings on a tract of land in single ownership. The accompanying documentation are available for inspection at the town clerk's office, Parting Way Building, one thirty Main Street, first floor, at Regular Hours. Now, um, I'm just gonna throw out my few thoughts out there. This is a brand-new article, um, it's not like we're, you know, kinda tweaking something that's there, 'cause we have nothing there.
That's not true.
Well, we have, we have a sentence, we have one sentence.
Right, there is one sen, I, I think it's important for people to understand, the bylaws do allow over fifty-five development. They're just, there's a one sentence in the bylaw, and there's no, there's nothing to follow after that. So it's the Wild West, but it is allowed, it's already in the bylaws. This isn't breaking ground.
What, what districts is it allowed in?
It doesn't say.
It doesn't say, that's, that, this is, this is, this is the problem.
It wasn't nothing there.
It was, basically, yeah, fifty-five housing, but that's what, as far as it goes, so.
Right, but, but it's in there, right, so it's, it is an allowed use. This almost implies that if somebody's proposing something new, it, it, it's already there. I don't think most people don't know that, they don't, you know why, because nobody's ever proposed one, okay? But there was somebody that actually proposed, it was in really conceptual phases, it was, uh, they were gonna come in from New Bedford, uh, Nichols, Norm Nichols?
Yeah, he was talking about what he was gonna do over there, around the pond.
Right, yes, that was the only thing I've ever seen as far as.
Right, I remember that, but that had disappeared.
It disappeared fast, but, but he was, you know, when I first saw that, I, I saw it in the bylaw, I looked up, it is, there is, you know, I was like, it was on to something.
There's no guidelines there.
There's no guidelines, right. And, you know, if you go to, and this should, I assume there's a lot of text to go with this, you know?
Yes.
You know, like a, a set of regs that requires.
Some kind of density, coverage.
Now it just says by special permit, it says nothing, you don't even know who the special permitting, uh, authority is, the way it's written. It's so, it's bizarre why it's in there, but the way it's in there.
Right.
But I just, we'll bring this out and talk more about it.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It isn't the bylaws, this isn't something new, I just want everybody to know that in general public. I know the bylaws, I read them, and it's there, this is, I think this is, this is an opportunity to, to make good developments out of what the Yeah. the lousy bylaw allows, right?
It's, it's, it's gonna get, it's, it should be giving, it should be giving any developer a set of guidelines that basically cutting things short, basically cutting down, I mean, the way that thing's written, you could go, you could spend a year in, in public hearings deciding what was gonna happen, really going back and forth, right, 'cause it's still required a special permit. So this is already, this is gonna set, again, set guidelines to, the starting point and to see if they're interested in doing it, you know? And I think we got, um, minimally two areas that we need to define, um, I would call it the sued and unsued, you know, areas. And, you know, and, and mentioning a third where you don't even have sewer all water, you know, and that potential. I think that's, you know, that's another thing that needs to be, um, looked at. And I, I'm a proponent for over fifty-five, however, I like to see it done right. And I think, you know, landmass of the size of acreage that this needs to be put on, um, again, predicated village residential A.
And there's two, ten thousand square foot lots versus, you know.
Yes, the setbacks, the setbacks are gonna be, to be different for the, for the village area versus, you know, significantly different, because I don't know too many open spaces left in the village area
Right.
where you could, but you could, I would think that you could still, I mean, the, uh, the zoning board of appeals, um, granted that the fifty, the fifty-five housing over on Hayes Street, Hayes, in between the Hayes and Garfield, and that's a small little office inside there.
The one, the couple of, the, so, the Knox's zone.
Yep, yep, right there, but Knox's property, right there, goes from, goes from Garfield over, over the Hayes.
This town has no districts for multifamily housing. It's not allowed.
No, you got, you, you gotta jump through hoops, you gotta, you gotta build a house and you can put it, two or two and a half years later, you can go back and, and turn it into a two.
You can put an in-law apartment, but you can't.
But again, by special permit.
You couldn't take a, you know, a house in the center of town here in Village and turn it into a two-family. Why not? I mean, I, we have, our zoning is so outdated, it's just, you know, it's ridiculous.
We should work on that, yeah.
Yeah, we gotta get proactive in order to build the tax base and come up with creative ideas and create more business and more development.
There is, and it's, again, I mean, I think we're, it just, I mean, I, I looked at it a long time, so I think everybody has. It's, I think we're, we're basically gonna, except for, you know, things like the aquarium, possibly, of, limited elsewhere as far as business and industrial stuff. I think we're gonna be, uh, we're, we're at a, we're at a minimum, because we don't have the infrastructure, we don't have the sewer, we don't have the sewer in places that, in the open space areas, we don't have sewer, so. We don't have the water, once you get past Ruppell up over there on Main Street, I think that's where the water, that's where the city water stops, town water stops. So, yeah, there's a.
How far does it go down Mendel? No, Mendel, um, middle.
Goes all the way up.
I think it goes all the way to, to Peckham Road.
Yeah, it's on Peckham Road.
And Peckham Road up to Bedford.
Like you said, it's weird after Perry Hill Road, it's, it dead ends like right around.
Uh, right, right, the rebel, 'cause it was, what was there, it was, it was Capaldi that was, uh, whatever the.
Does it make it that far?
Yeah, it did, because they, they installed, from what I was told, uh, Campanelli, that was, that used to be up where Ruppell is, that was a pit at one point in time, and they ran town water out there.
Okay.
Does it go down Perry Hill?
No, it makes a corner, it, it makes, it makes the turn at Mendel Road.
Mendel Road and.
No, it was on Water Polo Works, they did, they tied that loop, they tied that loop together up there.
Right, 'cause it loops.
Gas goes down, but no water goes down.
Correct.
So, yeah, I think, I think it's, I think we need to, you know, we're gonna have a discussion and spend some time with, making sure we, we can cover as much as we can to, to make it as comprehensive as we can.
Well, that's what, that's what I'm asking from the board, is, I mean, that's why I brought it up, um, you're gonna get a draft, just like the public can see, you, you'll get the draft email to you. Look over the draft, uh, and see what it's missing, see what needs to be changed, see what the setbacks are, see what you think the setback should be, see what the square footage should be, how many bedrooms are we talking, uh, how many, uh, how many units per, how many, one floor, two floor? All these things need to be considered, uh, this is, uh, this one has a lot that needs to be considered. I mean, there is a draft out there, so you'll see it, and just take those things into consideration on October fifth. I invite the public to come in, give us their opinions, uh, and their, uh, point of view on what they think we need. And, uh, we will have a, a hearty discussion, and it gives you guys some homework to think about what you wanna do and discuss that day.
Yeah, I think we, you know, I think, again, making it, I won't, I'm, I'm not gonna say developer-friendly, but, um, at least enticing, that there's something there.
Without, without some kind of economic incentive over building single-family houses in subdivisions, it's not gonna happen. I mean, period.
So I think, I think it's a combination of, you know, of having owner occupied and a percentage possibly, um, rental, is what's going through my mind. To make that incentive for a developer, other than that, you're, they're developing a piece of property, selling unit, selling it, the unit off, and now it becomes a condo, falls underneath the, some sort of a homeowner's association, condominium association, whatever we may call it, for this type of, um, development, so. But to have, um, the majority of it be owner occupied, I believe financially it would benefit the town much further, much better, um, than rentals. Because now you've got, if there was an agreement of, of two or four units, um, in a, in a particular building, um, each individual unit gets taxed. If you have a multi-family, it's just, it, it, it's just that, that single building, was my understanding of it anyway. So it, it's definitely far better income-wise for the town, um, I think to, um, you know, the majority of it, in my opinion anyways, is to try to get them to be owner occupied, um, with the option of, um, some sort of, uh, percentage of, that could be rental, that maybe the developer might wanna keep for himself at that point.
Over fifty-five rental?
Yeah, all, 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 all over fifty, you gotta put a develop, you gotta put an over fifty-five in.
That's all it can be.
It's all it can be, that's the way, that's how I look at it, that's, that's it, we're not gonna stop mingling, um, I don't, I don't think that's the, that's not the purpose of what we're trying to do here. But I think that, you know, there are people that qualify for that over fifty-five and, um, rather than purchasing something or don't have the full down payment or the ability for a mortgage, especially, who knows, that things are getting pretty dicey out there right now, you know, I don't think we've seen the full impact of the rising interest rates at, at this time. I think they're, they're coming, it was, it's still to come, the impact, overall.
Yeah, I, I, there's, the housing situation is so difficult out there, for any number of individuals. You know, whether it's young people that wanna get a start, or older people that don't need the big house anymore. There's just, there's just nothing out there.
There, there isn't anything out there, affordability-wise, I just watched Two Soul My Street, and I was just astonished at the money they got for them.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, for two, for, for a, a two-bedroom, the other one was, um, very tiny three-bedroom, I believe, is, is what it is, and to, to tickle that four-hundred-thousand-dollar mark for, for what they had for a, a footprint of a home, it's like, wow, okay. But I don't think either one of them made multiple listings. So there's, there's a, there's a desire for people to, so for, you know, me, I got basically three, call it four bedrooms now, I got sewer. I could be, move out, I have a four-bedroom home, I, just me and my girl, I don't need four bedrooms, you know what I mean? You know, if there's a place that reasonably, that's called fifty-five and older, yeah, absolutely, you know? I don't wanna be moving into a, uh, shoebox, you know, however, um, I don't need to, you know, I don't wanna be moving into a three-thousand-square-foot over fifty-five.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I've, I've seen both things work.
Oh, they do work.
Single-family houses as fifty-five and older as part of a development, you know, and, you know.
And I think that's the option.
Smaller your condo, well, condo-type units.
Yeah.
You know, where people don't have the responsibility of the outside maintenance, which is what a lot of the older crowd are looking for, they don't want the outside maintenance, that's, that's a hassle.
And they, you know, and I think you get a little bit older, I think you get to, you know, um, they, they look for a little bit, let's look at the council and agents, place that, you know, people, it's there, you've got people of same age, all, all that stuff, and it is, is important.
One of the reasons why I bring this up today, also, just to kinda get the wheels, the ball rolling, is I'm not gonna put blame on anybody, but this is, we should've started this, uh, months ago, uh, because we're, we might run out of time. So we have, then, we had to, we had to advertise for two weeks, so I actually wanted to get it, you know, this meeting, the first public meeting, but I, we couldn't because of the two-week, um, public notification. So our first meeting's on October fifth, and then we're obviously gonna go back and forth, you're gonna want this, you're gonna want that, you're gonna want that. Then we have one more meeting that we can come back on the following week, uh, for a special, uh, meeting, a special hearing for that. And then we need to resolve it then, 'cause then I, then we have two or three days to give our letter to the selectmen, so that he can go further, um, in further town meeting. So basically, in a nutshell, we don't have all the time in the world, that's why I'd like to, I'm bringing this up now, so you guys can start putting your thoughts together, reading it over, and not reading it on November fifth, when we walk in here and you're reading it for the first time, and thinking about it for the first time on November fifth.
Yeah, yeah, we gotta guess, you gotta, just gotta take some thinking about that.
This is the things I'm thinking about, we're gonna throw some things around, uh, heck, you might, you might like what's written there, but you might not have any change, you know what I mean?
Doubt it.
You never know, so, uh.
It's, it's, it's a pretty broad subject, and there's a lot of different ways to go.
So what's the, what's the, what's the, just, what's the fallout if we don't make?
It gets pushed to spring.
It gets pushed to spring, right, and that's what it takes.
You know, in.
Right.
But I would.
I don't, I just wanna, I just wanna get to, if it, if it's simple, everybody agrees real quick, this is, this is done, this is good, no big deal, but if there's a lot of discussion and a, and a lot of doubt, I mean, I, I just, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out, I just, I, I just don't wanna make too many missteps.
I don't either, um, obviously, we'll see if the public's got a big interest in this and, on our turnout. Uh, obviously, we'll, you know, if they don't turn out here, they'll, they'll talk about it at town meeting. I personally would like to view it as, I'd like to get something in there, uh, even if it's not a hundred percent, just like we do with the solar bylaw, we got the solar bylaw, right? And then we can tweak it, oh, we should've did this, we should've did that, then at the next meeting, you make amendments to that.
Pam's gonna hate you.
So I, I'd like to see something get put in a little bit more, like you said, there's something there already.
Yep.
I'd like to see something with.
It's loud.
Less loud.
I think we should, I think we should add something to it.
Right, now, if we get it a hundred percent, and, you know, then, and then we, maybe not, but at least I'd like to get more in there than what's in there right now. And then we can always go back at the next town meeting and tweak it here or there.
Could you, just, just one request, when you send that out, could you send out a, the zoning map of the town? So we gotta take a look, because a lot of this is gonna have to do with, you know, um, you know, my, my thinking anyway, in, in a big picture of the whole thing, okay? What we have left in, in, in the village area, uh, what we have in residential A, um, you know, and all of that, I think that's all.
You should look at it, well, I'm not gonna tell you what you should do, I'm gonna look at it as.
Listen, listen.
I'm gonna look at it as, there's a bunch of land in the residential area, ready? And there's a bunch of land outside the residential area, that's how I'm gonna look at it, I know there isn't, but I'm gonna look at it as there is, and make the rules accordingly. I'm not gonna just sit back and say, oh, we only got one spot in residential, and that's what we're going by the rules. No, think about it as, there's a bunch of area in, 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 in the village, there's a bunch of area outside the village.
You have to, like, even in the center here, okay, you can identify certain parcels that are big enough to do something.
Well, that's kinda what, that's kinda what I'm, that's really what I wanted to do.
There's something pop right away, but you also gotta think outside the box, like what, um, the gas station did. They bought two houses on either side because it was worth it for them.
Right.
And you might get a, you know, a piece of property that, and you know what, you know, buy that one. Buy that one, and that one, and that one, I can make something work, you know? And, and so.
You got to look at it as, there's a lot of area that could be done.
Guys, people will get creative.
Yeah, and make, make the.
If it's more, if it's, there's a financial incentive to buy those half dozen lots and put a higher-tensity development there, there's a good chance that it would happen.
Right, and you have to, we have to make this bylaw accordingly. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Our next meeting, ladies and gentlemen, is October fifth. It is a public hearing. That is it for tonight. Can I get a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Good night.